Hit the record, so we're going.
Great. Well, welcome, everyone. I guess we'll start with the roll call.
Commissioner Goulden.
You.
Commissioner Tark.
Present.
Commissioner Haskell.
Present.
Vice Chair Koff still.
Present.
And Chair Taylor is not present at the moment. We'll keep an eye on our technology and see if he can join us.
And I'll go down the agenda. So the first thing is oral communications. And this is a chance for members of the public to bring up a new topic. This would be one that's not on the agenda. If it's an agenda topic, we'll talk about it during the agenda. But we'll open it up now for oral communications. And I think the procedure is people raise their hand. Do I call on people? I see that two hands are raised.
We have two hands raised. You can go ahead and call on them and then I'll unmute them and allow them to speak.
Great. So the first one is Robert Young.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for being council members and spending your time. I know that these meetings must take a lot of your time and I do really appreciate it. I'm a resident of about 30 years. I live at 550 Westridge. I've really enjoyed the town greatly with my kids. They're all gone now. And it's relaxed environment with trails and it's an environment. I deeply think, though, that we dodged a bullet last year in wildfires with the close approach of the CZU fire. I was disappointed listening to the November Town Council meeting that the council had chosen a well-meaning, but really a totally unqualified ad hoc wildfire committee to make recommendations to the town council on a plan of action that the town should take to mitigate wildfires. I really think that sitting on a disaster time bomb, that you're not appropriately prioritizing. I was deeply disappointed that you did not include a letter sent to you signed by 80 fellow residents of the town requesting that you prioritize town wildfire preparations above development activities by completing a trial evacuation drill and completing a state mandated wildfire hazard and risk analysis and budget before you consider what the ramifications are to putting 253 more homes into Portola Valley. We already have a very high probability of a significant loss of life and property with our present fire hazards, which you are not focused on abating. Let's at least understand now, before the fire season starts, if we can evacuate the town appropriately. And let's really focus on getting going with a quality wildfire hazard and risk development plan. The nature of town meetings also has really changed and I'm disturbed about it. And so let me just try to explain it. There's really no method anymore to have a rational and civil dialogue to solve such significant problems as we have done in the past in these meetings. And again, I appreciate you being council people, but in these meetings, the residents can only ask questions which are really never answered, and there never is a chance to have real dialogue to solve them. And sometimes, after all the public input is made, there are unfavorable and untrue statements made by council or staff members of residents' comments without any ability for the residents to discuss them. I personally, myself, am trying to figure out what I should do. Move out of Portola Valley because I don't see a solution coming down the road to abate a real disaster happening. And I don't see other people worried about it. Maybe I've been watching too much data on what fires can do and looking at all the hazards that we have in our town. But I really don't want to leave all my friends and just basically say to them fend for yourselves. Or how do I get your focus or the town's focus on what we really should do? Which is going to mean the life or death of so many of our fellow residents. My question to you, and I know you can't talk about this, but I'd like it to be a statement for you to think about, is what do you think we should do to really do something meaningful? I've studied this deeply and we are really sitting on a time bomb. Thank you very much again. And I know that I'm probably impassioned in my statements and I would like to personally thank you again for the service that you make for our town.
Great. Thank you for your comments. And you're right, we can't take this up as an issue that we discussed now, but we think we're all concerned about fire. And we have John Richards from the town council. So it can be taken into account for future discussions and meetings.
And if I may.
Yeah.
I just wanted to also bring your attention and appreciate, of course, you're bringing this important issue to us. This is the Town Planning Commission. And I'm not sure if you might want to be before the town council, which as Commissioner Koff mentioned, John Richards is sitting on.
Great. We'll move on. I see another hand up from Rita Combs.
Hi. Thank you for taking my question. I just want to, I've been listening or sitting in or watching the past couple of Zoom meetings for the Portola Valley School District. And they're talking about all of this building that is going to be happening in the summer. And you won't be able to use the field and there's going to be a driveway and there's going to be all of these things. And with the wonderful project site that's under building and planning now on the town website, since we can't go into buildings and actually review these plans that the 4,600 people in Portola Valley are actually paying for. I'm asking, I had sent a message to Adam. And I'm asking you if that project can be added to the project website under the portolavally.net so that the residents can see the building structures that they're actually paying for. So appreciate you having that in your consideration, but it's something that people are actually very much interested in. Thank you.
Great. And Laura, I don't know if you have anything to comment on that. If not, we'll take it in to consideration and for staff to see if they can add that project.
Yeah, through the vice chair, thank you. My understanding from the school district is that they have detailed information on their website about the main building project. The portions that are within the town's purview are quite limited, but I appreciate that feedback and we'll see what we can do about that.
Yeah, even if it's just a simple link and all the information can stay on their server, but a simple link, a lot of residents that don't have kids or, you know, as Rob said, his kids are grown and gone. You know, they wouldn't think about going to the school district website, but they would go to the town website and through our taxes, we're actually paying for these buildings. And so, thank you ahead again.
Thanks. Oh, and I see a few more hands up now. So we'll call on the next few people. Caroline Vertonghen.
Thank you very much for taking my comments. They're Planning Commission and Planning Director. Just like the previous speaker. I've been a member of this community for over 26 years and I've served on committees. So I really understand how time-consuming it is to sit on a commitment and help fulfill the duties and help actually help the needs of our residents. So I really appreciate it. However, I must say there has been changes, and especially in the five last years. And it seems that these changes have negatively impacted our community. And we also seem to notice pressure that is put on committees and staff, which we have not seen before. It's definitely not my intention to put more work for you. But like the previous speakers have said, and we have said in so many other committees, there is a lack of proper communication. We are told that their links are on the websites. We don't find them. So because we're so concerned about this committee, a way that we can help support you volunteers is continue expressing our concerns. And that's what we're doing. So Laura has put a list of projects that will come up again in the next few months. And we know these projects very well. We have raised our kids here. We have worked with these projects. We know them well. And so we have expressed our concerns and we will continue to express our concerns because it's not going in the right direction. And I hope, and perhaps you have heard, but there was the comment of former mayor Carolyn Feierbach, who is a former mayor in Belmont. She shared her concern during open forum last week. She's and other government officials like Attleton and San Francisco, many residents in Portola Valley, they're concerned that legislators are taking away our local control and are taking away local zoning power. I also hope that you saw the letter of Therese McMillan. She's the Executive Director of the Association of Bay Area Governments. This was, her letter was in response to the comments made by Vice Mayor Hughes and Councilmember Richardson. They raised concerns about our fire and earthquake risks, among other risks, like the evacuation routes. Her letter clearly gave us an option. She stated, "Communities can choose to take these risks into consideration with where and how they cite future developments. They can limit growth in areas of higher hazard, or they can increase building standards to address the hazards." I hope you will not increase the building standards. You can do that, but first of all, what you have to do is limit the growth in areas of high fire and earthquake hazard and take all the risks and concerns into consideration before we go on to the next project. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline. Let's see, our next speaker for oral communications is Man.
There we go. Yes. Okay. Nan Shostak Largita Lane. Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to add my voice to Caroline's and Rusty's voices. I'm very, very concerned. You know, we could be considered NEMBS, not NEMBS, I believe, in adding housing to increase the diversity of the town. It's gotten a bit exclusive. And it wasn't that way when I moved here in 1988. It's really changed a lot. I would like to see more housing built for people who are, you know, more moderate, moderate priced housing. But before we do that, I really think we have to consider the evacuation issue and the issue of infrastructure. So some of you may know, I'm very, very concerned particularly about the scenario of fire after earthquake and having one or more of our evacuation routes closed because of earthquake rupture. And it's just going to take, let's just say, we cannot safely evacuate the entire town. In that case, it's just not possible. There will be people, a lot of people, whose lives will be lost. If it's just fire, the same thing may happen. Roads may be closed because trees or power lines or power poles have fallen across the roads, blocking the escape routes. So I would like to see if we can solve that problem before we really start adding a lot more housing. And for infrastructure too, how are we supposed to keep adding more people and more each rena cycle without thinking about increasing our water supply? The electrical power, you know, making the electrical system a little bit more robust here. You know, sewer, I guess, will need to go to new developments and yeah, perhaps natural gas too, unless it's all, unless the developments are all electric. So I'm just, I would like to see if we can pose these issues, pose these questions and see if we can solve them before we start adding housing, so much housing. Thank you very much for your time.
Great. Thank you, Man. Next, for oral communications, we'll hear from Kristy Corley. Hi.
Hi, thank you very much. And thank you for your dedication to keeping our town the way we love it and the way it is. I do want to know how many people are on the Zoom. I always want to know that. So I'm wondering if you can answer.
Yes, I see six panelists. I think you can see us. And then I see 11 attendees.
Thank you very much. And I'm wondering if all the letters that come to the Planning Commission and come to the Town Council regarding housing, that you make them available to all the residents to read. So if a letter was sent since your last Planning Commission, we want to read them as well as you want to read them in your packets. So that, I was surprised not to see any letters attached since the last meeting. And we know at least one has been sent, but I'm sure there was more. I also would love a report on insurance issues and fire. I believe Jeff Alves in the past was going to give us some feedback on that and I never did hear a report. I'm hearing that Ladera is getting cancellations and so is PV and we want some solutions to that or some feedback as to what you know about it. I know Jeremy's been getting some calls. Also, the estimated allocation for Rena housing numbers for Portola Valley is 253. In the quick summary, I was surprised not to see that number reported. And even in this agenda, you have to tap through to find it. I think it's really important for residents to see on the front line what we've, what our estimated allocation numbers are. We're trying to keep residents informed and we need to let them know what could be coming. It's not a final number, but as you know, Rena numbers usually don't change, if at all, even with an appeal. So those are my three comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Laura, do you have anything to say about the letters? I feel like we do always, when letters address a topic that we're discussing, we do always get those in our packet. And me and my fellow commissioners are attentive to reading all the letters that come in.
The letters that come in before the packet is published are included in the packet. And then for planning applications, if we give you something after the meeting, I mean, after the packet over email or when we used to be in person on the dais, then we're collecting those and making sure that they get into the record for the next meeting. So if you review a project several times, by the end, we make sure that all of the comments are collected so that the public has access to all of them. We are also working on some technology or web-based solutions. So I'm hoping something like that will make it even easier to review the public comments.
Let's see, in our next oral communications, a hand up is from Betsy Morgenthau.
How do you do, commissioners and staff? Thank you for inviting me to speak. My question actually regards trying to better align my expectations with the planning department intentions. Laura, at the last Planning Commissioner meeting, I believe in response to a question from the public, you'd indicated there was going to be a portal for, I thought, the big issues facing the Planning Commission that we're going to hear about in part later tonight. But specifically regarding the portal, the information, as I heard it, the information was, information was going to be assembled and would be posted there for ease of access for both the Planning Commission and for the public. It was in response to a live question and so I assumed, perhaps wrongly, that it was forthcoming and imminent. And although the proof is in the pudding, I want to emphasize first and foremost what a perfectly superb idea it is. And I speak from experience. I've gone through a volume of material because all of these issues you're discussing tonight represent concerns that the town's been dealing with for over two years. And multiple, multiple meetings later, there's a lot to look through as I remember, hey, I think it's somewhere and I need to go through many pages. Would that I could reclaim those hours? So I was so enthusiastic to hear your suggestion. And were I the planning commissioners, I would be elated. Whereas I am concerned predominantly with one particular issue right now. You all have so much on your plate. So my question is to liberate us, you know, the best pieces of us to something more productive. How soon can I expect and how many portals, I mean, how many subjects will you be handling? Particularly tonight, I think we're talking about the housing element. We're talking about Stanford and we're talking about Neely. Forgive me if I've forgotten one. That would be the end of my question. I look forward to your response, both in whether this will be comprehensive and what timing I can expect them, because timing matters. If it's not in enough advanced time, you know, it will be a little less helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Laura, do you want to say anything about that or?
I'm sure. I'm happy to. Staff's intention is to populate the projects page with more information. So the projects page is already on the website. What's there so far is information about the Stanford project and the information about the 138 Goya appeal. We anticipate adding information to the website in more detail related to Neely for sure. Neely winery application will have more information there. And then for some, and then we'll see how some of the other projects develop. For some of the more routine projects, we're going to create a project list and the list will be available there. So it won't have all the links and all the information for things that are more routine. So it certainly is our intent to make it easier to find all of those materials. And then in terms of timing, we are actively working on it. So I would think it'll be something, you know, I don't want to overpromise. I think we'll have significant improvements and changes to the website within a month. And then the town is working on more comprehensive changes to the website that will launch quite a bit later this year. But we are working on a new structure to the website that we think will make it easier to find development applications, information, as well as advanced planning or policy work that the town is working on.
Hi, everyone. My apologies. For some reason, I thought this meeting was at 7:30.
Hey, Craig. Thanks, Laura, for that. So I think that's the end of our oral communications. Craig, just to fill you in, we had extensive oral communications. So we're just getting ready to start the new business, if you want to.
Could I, one thing, sorry, through the chair, is we have one person that's on the phone. So if you're on the phone and you want to make an oral communication, press star nine and that will raise your hand.
Great.
And I don't see them, so I think we can go ahead.
Okay, great.
Awesome. And can you just give me just a quick, the oral communications, what were the topics?
Well, it was extensive, so we can fill you in.
All right. Yeah, I'll catch up later. That's fine.
Six or seven speakers and we've got the notes and we can always share the Zoom link back with you. So you can watch it if you'd like.
Okay, great. Again, my apologies. Okay, so then moving on to the first agenda item for this evening, upcoming Planning Commission work program. Laura, you're on.
Thank you. Just a second.
Sorry.
I was trying to sneak in a drink there. So thank you. Good evening, commissioners, members of the public. The intent of this item is to really provide a preview for the Planning Commission and for the residents about some of the work that's upcoming. It is a significant amount of work that's going to come before the Planning Commission. And so we wanted to give a sense of what things are coming and for the things that we know the timing, to share some of the timing. And so I wanted to give you an overview on some of those items. The staff memo has it separated out between policy planning or advanced planning work and then the more large or townwide significant development applications that are either coming in or kind of getting momentum going. So a number of these things will be familiar to you, but we wanted to combine it in one place to make it easy for us to talk about and for the residents to follow and track what the Planning Commission is going to be working on. So these are projects and items that we expect to come forward in 2021 and some of them into 2022, depending on the timing of how they go and what they include. And I want to note that the timelines that I'm going to give tonight are preliminary. These things are always evolving and being impacted by outside forces. And so we're going to try to estimate some timelines, but things are subject to change. And then the commission is familiar with this, but for members of the public, because of the way the Brown Act works and the way that we work on development applications, the Planning Commission cannot comment on the merits of any of the projects that we're presenting in the current planning projects. So we're not going to talk about the details of the projects themselves. More talk about what's upcoming and the process. So we're not going to talk about the specifics of those projects or the merits. So starting with some of the policy planning issues, first, we need to do another accessory dwelling unit or ADU code amendment. And so I think you're all aware on the commission that the state passed a few more laws after our big update that we completed in early 2019. So to be honest, there was quite a bit of confusion because there was several laws and it was very challenging to interpret. So they've been in effect for a year now, but the dust has kind of finally settled. And HCD put out their guidance in December of 2020. I'm sorry. Yes, December of 2020. And so we had been kind of waiting and anticipating that guidance to get some clarity on a few things. In the meantime, we have been applying the new laws with the assistance of the town attorney's office. So that's the way the law works. We're required to implement them while we're working on our own ordinance. So during that time, we have learned better what the laws mean and we've gotten interpretation from HCD. And also by working through it, we have learned some of the kind of policy questions that have come up by combining our existing ADU ordinance with the new state laws. So what we're proposing to do is to bring forward to the Planning Commission a code amendment that would be very focused on the state law compliance and that would be the primary portion of it. And then we've got just a few policy questions for you to consider, things that have come up while we've been implementing the new state law. So we're going to ask for your feedback in direction on a couple of items. And then the process will be what you're familiar with in the past, where you do what we affectionately call the sausage making and make a recommendation up to the town council. And then they would have a first reading and second reading and then that ordinance would go into effect. But unlike the last set of ADU ordinances where we had, you'll remember 17 policy issues that we were looking at, many of them very significant. This will be a much more focused effort so that we can get that code adopted and be able to have good guidance for the residents. The town attorney's office is leading this effort since it's primarily related to state law compliance. And then Dylan and myself are working with the town attorney's office on the policy issues. We're well into that discussion. And so I do expect this item to come before you relatively quickly. We don't have a timeline yet, but this is something you'll see in the next couple of months, for sure. For, I would imagine it will take probably two reviews by the Planning Commission in order to provide preliminary feedback on some things and then come back with an ordinance. But we're still putting that together. So we'll let you know how that comes, how that comes across. The next item that I wanted to review is an amendment to the Significant Tree Ordinance. So this is within chapter 15 of our municipal code. It's not in the zoning code. We have a separate chapter that deals with construction and this one is for site development and tree protection. And the Conservation Committee for quite some time has been interested in doing an amendment. And one of the things that they wanted to add is to protect mature manzanita plants. And so they've been working on some criteria for that. And then they're also recommending some adjustments to the trees that are included, adding one or two, taking one off, and they looked at all the to the trees that are included, um, adding one or two, taking one off, and they looked at all the measurements for all of the different trees to be protected. So the conservation committee has made and presentation to ASCC and received preliminary feedback from ASCC and they made a revision to what they are proposing. So now staff is working with the conservation committee to kind of formalize some code language that we would bring to the planning commission for their consideration. Um, for this project, I've brought in a consultant planner. That is, uh, I've mentioned to you before, I think Suzanne Avila, she's a previous director in Los Altos Hills. And so she's working with us on a few projects. And so she's the staff lead for this. And the timing, we haven't determined yet specifically, but we do expect it to be in the first half of 2021. And it could be sooner, kind of depending on how the agendas balance out. So that, that's upcoming. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about revisions to the design guidelines for increased fire safety. So I think you're all aware that the town's ad hoc wildfire preparedness committee has made a number of recommendations over different phases. Uh, so one of the recommendations was to make changes to the building code, sort of like a building code, reach code, like we've done in the past for energy, but around fire safety. And that work is currently underway. We've been working with a consultant building official. And so that work is well in progress. And then the next item is this design guideline amendment. So they've made some specific suggestions. And I think it also opens up some opportunities to address some things that ASCC has observed in their own work related to things like tree removal, um, on sites where there are non-native or especially flammable trees. So an opportunity to encourage tree removal with certain types of projects when it's appropriate. Um, building siding, uh, materials, some of those types of things that would go, um, that would be recommendations and guidelines as opposed to some of the hard language of the code. So we expect the ASCC to be the lead in terms of working through the details of this. And then it would come through the planning commission for your consideration and additional recommendation. And then that would go up to the town council. So we do not have a schedule for this work yet. I would, I think right now we'll probably start it towards the middle of 2021. Um, and so it would be happening, um, in the second half of this year is my current estimate. Next is the housing element update. So this is a big one. Um, it's important to start refreshing everybody's memory on the housing element. So we included an FAQ as attachment number one to your staff report, um, for the commission and for residents to start to develop, you know, kind of the language and vocabulary and get used to doing this. We, we do it every eight years under the law that's, that's been in effect for a while. And the housing element, as you know, is one of the elements of the general plan. And state law requires us to update our housing element every eight years. And so that's called the housing element cycle is how people refer to it. And the housing element that we're going to start planning for is for the years 2023 to 2031. And so because it's a significant amount of work, we start pretty early in working on that. A significant portion of that work is related to the regional housing needs allocation. That's what we refer to as RENA. And there's been a process going on to create a methodology to decide how many units and at what affordability levels each city and town receives under their RENA, under the RENA process. So that methodology, um, process has been going on with ABAC MTC. And we included in the staff report, the link to the two, um, updates that staff has provided to the town council. So if you're interested in more information about what information we've provided to council, you can easily access it there. We're working with 21 elements and that's a collaboration of all the cities and towns in San Mateo County. It's been, um, in existence for several housing element cycles and it's really a model in California for how cities and towns can collaborate on housing elements. And so we really have a lot of experience working through that system and the council has approved a contract to work with them again. So I think that that's, um, good news to be collaborating on that. So this spring 2021, staff will be going to council, um, will be collecting the best practices, some ideas, um, and getting council direction on how they would like to proceed with the overall process. So this will be what resources do we have? What funding do we need through? We have grant funding, but what other funding do we need to be planning for? What kind of public engagement process would the council like to see? And really kind of setting the path forward for how the town is going to go through that, um, housing element process. So it is going to be, we think, a significant, um, undertaking, let me say, for the community. Um, to put some perspective and numbers around it, and Christie Corley mentioned this, thank you, Christie. Our current allocation for the housing element cycle that we're in right now is 64 units. And our draft allocation for the next housing element cycle is 253 units. So we're talking about a very different scale and I think we'll put the town in a position of having to be creative and really, really think that through about how to achieve, um, compliance with the state law and how to reach that allocation number. So we'll be continuing to provide updates to the council related to the RENA methodology process. Um, so commissioners and members of the public, you can track that through the council if you're interested in following it there. And then what we'll do in terms of planning commission is we'll come back. Um, once the council has given us direction on the public engagement process and circle back with you and talk about what that's going to be and what the planning commission's involvement is going to be in that process. We think that the planning commission will have a significant role, um, as is, is typical for a housing element update process. Uh, next is the safety element and California law now requires municipalities to update the safety element at the same time as the housing element. The state law basically put it on the same kind of eight-year cycle. And so the state law says that we need to review it and if necessary, update it. And the Office of Planning and Research, OPR, at the state level has put out very detailed guidance on this now. It didn't necessarily used to be the case. Um, you can imagine that there's a lot more emphasis on safety elements for all of the reasons that we can all imagine. And for the reasons that the residents were talking about in oral communications. So this has become a really important part of general plans and local government is to put more emphasis on the safety element. So we'll be undertaking a safety element update as well. Um, we do not have a timeline or a schedule how we're going to approach that yet, but we'll be working, um, up some plans and bringing those to the town council for their direction about how we're going to do that. There's also some opportunities to collaborate of across jurisdictions. So some things are specific to every city and town, but some things can be done generally. So we're working on any opportunities to collaborate with our neighbors as well. So that is the summary of the policy planning or advanced planning items that I wanted to review with you. Um, and then we, I got a question and I, I thought it was a great one that I wanted to respond to. You might recall that we had been discussing in the past, um, the potential for a comprehensive update to the general plan. And so that was something we'd been discussing with the town council and thinking about how we might go about that. If it was warranted and how we would do it and how we would undertake some, something like that. Well, since that time, the kind of world of the housing element has evolved and we've become aware of this potentially very high allocation compared to our existing one. And so we think at this time, staff thinks the, the place to focus is really on the housing element and the safety element. And so we would expect that the comprehensive update to the general plan would just sort of wait in the wings. And we'll see what comes out of the housing element and safety element. And those really, I think for us turn out to be the most important things to concentrate on at this time anyway. And so I think it really directs focus and attention in the right places. And then after that, we'll revisit the rest of the general plan and see, you know, what plan might work and get council direction on what we should take up next. So we just wanted to mention that even though it's not on the memo, in case people were wondering how that was connected. So for development applications, we also have a number of items that are going to be coming before the commission. So the first one in the memo is, yeah.
Before you go on, I mean, just because these two sections are fairly distinct. Um, I'm wondering if any of the commissioners just have clarification questions for you.
Oh, sure. Great.
So is it, are there any questions that anybody wants to ask before Laura goes into the next section?
I had a couple in there. Um, so the question was, um, when you went through the design guideline amendment for increased fire safety, are there other pieces that are coming out of the ad hoc, um, committees work? And is that just one specific element? Or is, is, is that the, the totality of it?
There's a lot of recommendations and they are in two groups. So there's a set of recommendations that the council has already, um, adopted. And we are underway of doing many of them. Some are completed, some are underway and some are coming up quickly. So this one to amend the design guidelines is in that first batch of recommendations. And then the ad hoc wildfire preparedness committee has been working on a second batch of recommendations. And I think those are, I think the council has received a preview on them and will, I think, be acting on them or adopting them shortly. But I, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the timing of the second batch of the recommendations, but there's a number of recommendations across several different subjects in both batches of recommendations.
Okay. And in that second batch, is that something we would anticipate feeding into the update of the safety element?
Um, potentially, I think that's a great question. So we'll be going back and looking at all of their recommendations and seeing how, you know, they integrate in. Um, so that our safety element really reflects our local residents' interests and concerns.
Thank you. That was it.
Any other questions? Right, hearing none. Laura, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so for development applications.
I'm, I'm sorry, hold on a second.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's, uh, that guy right now. Uh, the, uh, 21 elements, is that a joint powers entity or, or what is it?
Um, okay, let me think. It's, we technically, we have a contract with the county. So it is a contract that C-CAG enters into, City and County Association of Governments enters into with a specific planning firm, Baird and Driscoll to perform the planning services. So Baird and Driscoll is the consultant. They consult for the county and then we have an agreement with the county for those shared services.
Got it. So it's a contracting, 21 elements is really a contracting vehicle to get to Baird and Driscoll presumably at, uh, at better rates. Is, is that right or?
Yes, it's, it's at better rates. Um, and then some of the funding comes from a regional funding source that came from the state. Some of the funding comes from C-CAG and then some of the funding is each local, um, municipality that's participating in it.
Does 21 elements have a particular set of policies that they like that are, they're advocating or is it truly technical, uh, recommendations, number crunching at your direction?
Um, they do not advocate any particular policy. It's coordination, technical analysis, data analysis, um, those kinds of technical functions. They also do, well, they have a lot of direct communication with HCD. So they receive feedback from HCD. They also provide services around things like, um, monitoring legislation, ADU implementation. Um, so they have a number of other items that they provide services, um, to cities and towns on.
That's super helpful. Can you provide some additional background, uh, to us?
Yeah, yeah. Would you like me, um, why I could? Um, let me think about the best way to do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. They also, yeah, I'm sorry.
They do have a website that you can look at to give, get, get an overview. Terrific. Okay, any other questions before we move on? All right. Laura, if you're, floor is yours.
Okay, great. Um, so we're going to, third time's a try. This, the, um, the start right is fire station number eight. So I think many of you are aware that Woodside Fire Protection District has, um, put in an application to update their existing fire station on Portola Road. The ASCC conducted a preliminary review of the project and was looking at some of the design considerations of that. Uh, there were a number of residents that provided comments and had a very high level of interest in the project. So when we were looking at it through the ASCC lens, we realized that there were some zoning issues that were more within the purview of the planning commission. And so the ASCC referred it up to the planning commission to take a look at some of those issues. As we were working it through with the applicant team on behalf of the fire district, we realized that the best path forward was to, for them to apply for a zoning text amendment. And we'll get into all the details of this when we talk about it. But the gist of it is that there were some zoning changes in the past that kind of created some confusion and made the fire station a legal non-conforming use, which had implications for how it's treated within the code. So we thought that the best long-term solution is just to solve for that and create, you know, a proper code context for the fire station to be under. So we're going to be coming forward to the planning commission for a preliminary review of the proposed zoning text amendment, the CUP amendment, and for the planning commission to give some feedback perking. So those are the issues that are particularly within the planning commission's purview. And then we would go back to ASCC for the ASCC to weigh in on some of the design issues once we've dealt with some of those kind of gating or threshold issues that are with the planning commission. So we've been working very closely with the applicant team on this one. Right now, we anticipate that this is going to come forward to you. We anticipate some, things are subject to change, but we think it will come forward the second meeting in March. Um, so we have not, you know, when we put a final confirmation on that, we will notify all of the residents within a thousand feet and will directly notify the residents that we've had direct communication with, since there's a lot of interest in this. There is a chance, of course, that that could be at a later meeting, but we think that that schedule is probably going to hold at this point. So the planning commission will be a recommending body for the zoning text amendment. Since it is a code amendment, it would have to go up to town council for their final decision on the project. And then I included, of course, the Sanford Faculty Housing Project at the wedge. Um, you're very aware and most of the residents, um, that are on the, on the Zoom tonight are aware that we held a study session on January 20th on the proposed project. We are working on the FAQ that we talked about and so we're we made significant progress on that. So we're getting pretty close to being able to release that. There's really a large number of questions. We're trying to give really good and thorough and detailed answers. So it's not going to be like a little snippet FAQ. It'll be a really detailed kind of question and answer document so that residents can have their questions answered that came up at your meeting as well as at the ASCC meeting. We're also going to be working on adding additional information to the website. So we included that link in the memo as well. And then, as you know, the planning commission is a recommending body. It's going to go, um, up to town council. And I've been telling the residents since then, we're going to separate the planning commission's work into a couple of meetings that have discrete topics so that people will know how to engage with the process and can talk about the issues that they're most interested in. So we'll be working on that. And as I've said before, I'll be in communication with Chair Taylor so that we can set out that kind of, um, those agendas and, and post that information to the website so that people know what's coming. Uh, next is the Neely Winery Conditional Use Permit Amendment. So you're very familiar with this application. It's been about a year since you considered it last. We did have to put this on hold for a while because of the pandemic. We resumed working on it once we were able to, um, with our resources. The applicant has made revisions in response to the last set of comments from the commission and the community feedback that's been coming in throughout that process. And so the, um, the project reached a point that we thought it was appropriate to look at the environmental review of it. So we've been reviewing the project under CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, and that review is active right now. So there are residents that have asked me, you know, what's being studied and what's coming? And so we are looking at traffic biology and noise in particular. And residents have expressed an interest in seeing the traffic, um, analysis, the traffic safety analysis when that's available. So we will be making that available and we will be sharing it with the bicycle, um, traffic safety. I'm getting the letters wrong, um, committee, the Bicycle Traffic Safety Committee, um, will have a chance to look at it and review. will have a chance to look at it and review it before it comes to the planning commission, as well as the normal reviewing committees for projects. So we have a consultant planner, Kavitha Kumar, that we brought on board to increase our capacity. So she is working as the project planner for this. Of course, I continue to be very closely involved in that. And the town attorney's office is also very closely involved related to the environmental review. So in terms of what happens next, we anticipate that that project will go next to ASCC to review some of the physical aspects of it. And depending on how a few details evolve, we may still need to do additional committee review, especially maybe conservation committee. So we're seeing how that evolves. We might check in with conservation one more time. And then after ASCC, we would come to the planning commission so that you can resume your consideration and kind of bring together all of the things that you've considered in the past and look at the project in its current form and hold public hearings and consider the project in its entirety as well as the environmental document. So that's what's coming up on that one. And then, yeah.
On that one, are we going to sort out the CUPs at the same time? Because are there like multiple overlapping CUPs?
Yes, there's, well, there's two CUPs that apply to their request. So both CUPs would have to be amended in order to, if the planning commission wished to approve the proposal. So we'll provide, I think, you know, we'll work hard to provide clarity around that issue of the two CUPs because I think that that was confusing in the past.
Yeah, thank you.
Then next is a priory school has submitted a conditional use permit amendment application. And so this is another one that we had to delay due to the pandemic, but now we've been working on it. So we have the same consultant planner, Kavitha Kumar, that's working on the Neely application, is working on the priory school CUP amendment. They also have a new head of school. So we'll be introducing him to the planning commission as we go through that process. So that application is to increase enrollment and also they've got some modular buildings on site that were meant to be temporary and they would like to make those permanent. And we're also going to be resolving the issue that the planning commission has grappled with in the past related to average daily attendance versus total enrollment. You'll, you'll recall that this is an issue the planning commission has talked about several times. So that will get resolved in this and it'll be a chance to clarify any provisions, reporting provisions, and just make sure that their master plan is up to date and we understand what they consider to be kind of full build out of their master plan. So this application is just getting going, but I wanted you to be aware of it because you normally see regular reports from the priory and you had identified this issue of average daily attendance versus enrollment as something the commission wanted to see cleaned up. So it is, you know, significant project that when we go forward with it, since it is a CUP amendment, we would be noticing all of the residents within 1,000 feet. And this is one that we would provide more information on the website as well. When we, when we start to have more information to share, it's very early, so we don't have a schedule for that yet. So that is the summary of the significant development applications that we anticipate coming before the commission. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions about those.
Listeners, any questions? You're muted, Nicholas. There we go. Um, for the Neely project, are we doing a an EIR or are we doing an MND? What's the, what's our CEQA pathway?
We have not decided yet. We are still looking at those specific topic areas and deciding what document we're going to prepare.
We also have Stanford, it's not Stanford, the school district, and that was raised earlier during the public comment, one of the items. Can you give us an update as to where we are here and also include that as an ongoing topic to keep it posted on?
Um, yes. So as a little bit of background information, in case people are not familiar, local governments, municipalities have very limited land use authority over schools. So this comes from state law. So they are not subject to our process for the appearance, the placement, the construction of their buildings in our normal land use process. There are some specific areas where we can regulate them and we have been working through those details and they have applied for an encroachment permit. And that is for construction of a driveway. They're proposing a new driveway on Alpine Road to replace an old service driveway in a different part of the school campus. And I understand that to be for emergency access as well as for kind of service access to the site. So they have an active application and with the town for an encroachment permit. And then we are also reviewing whether the project needs a site development permit for that driveway. And that is an area we understand from the town attorney that we can regulate, given our limited authority over land use. So we're looking at that and we have not made a final determination about the site development permit. But it would be a minor site development permit with limited review. We think it would probably be at a staff level, not at an ASCC or planning commission level. So we're working that through right now, but it would be a very limited review. The town attorney is also working with their attorney to understand what their environmental review process is under CEQA. So we're working that out still as well.
So Laura, would the, with the access that's being proposed be part of the larger development that this school district is, is looking to undertake?
Yes, part of the larger development. So I'm not expert on what their overall project includes because we're not regulating it. So, you know, per the comment that was earlier in that oral communications, I do believe that they have information on their website, but we can look into, you know, adding information on ours and a link to the school district page. Their representative said they have really detailed information there. I haven't verified that myself.
I'm sure that we support the school district, all of us, just the same. The, a school district or university is, of the state of California, is required to consider offsite impacts within their environmental document. And I presume that the town would be involved with that process as well and would be providing comments as a entity within the sphere of influence of the, of the project. And are we, are we engaged? So I'm interested both in how we are engaging with the school district on the larger project as well as to understand, so what the larger impacts might be by granting an encroachment and development permit in the context of the larger development that's being proposed and which I also don't know anything about, other than it's supposed to be a is backed by what, a $40, $50 million bond initiative?
So I think to speak to a couple parts of that, in terms of coordination, there has been coordination going on between the school district and town staff, including the town manager and public works director and myself, you know, with different levels on different details of it. The town attorney is in communication with their attorney as well. So I think we have the right people connected to try to, you know, get information. We have certainly encouraged them to continue to do outreach to the community around what they're proposing and, you know, the scope of the project. So we are still getting a handle on the scope of their environmental review. And so your points are well taken. I certainly agree that it's important for the town to understand offsite impacts and provide, to be able to have an opportunity to provide comments on that. We just don't know yet the details of it. We're still working it through.
Great. Can you continue to report back on this before the town takes action either on the encroachment permit or the development permit or provides comments on the impacts of the project? And again, I, I don't know what phase they're in, but it sounds like a, I can't remember the last time the town had a $40 million project going on. Maybe it was a town center. But uh, it sounds exciting. Want to, want to make sure that we're appropriately involved.
Yeah, certainly. If I can make a comment, I guess. I hadn't heard about this. I don't have kids in the school district and would really appreciate your providing links to information sources. I don't, so that I can get up to speed. One question I have is where on Alpine this is supposed to be? There's nothing obvious to me that there's no obvious place. So I'll look at the information that you have. But that is a scenic corridor, so I am going to have some questions about how this all fits together. I know it's complicated and today isn't the day, but to give you a preview, those are the questions that, that I'll need some education about, okay?
Okay. We'll gather some information and pass it along.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Laura on this section? So Laura, are you going to add these various projects to the project list on the website?
Um, yes, I would anticipate adding all of these to the website. I mean, I think it kind of depends on some of the timing around the fire station, but I would anticipate adding the others to the website.
Okay, yeah, because it seems like that's, I think that's what the public would expect is that they should be able to go to that website and basically see the kind of things we talked about tonight and see how they're evolving forward.
I have a quick question, Craig, if it's okay. Is there any available information on the scale to which the priory wants to increase attendance at this point or is that TBD?
It's to be determined. We're still doing an initial review of the materials.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Any other questions before we move on? All right. The commission reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair. You should take public comments.
Certainly. And we've got some hands raised. Great. Why don't we start with Rusty? Rusty, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One question is about the Stanford project and one question is about the housing element or several questions about the housing element. Let me start with the Stanford project and work my way back. Under our subdivision ordinance, the planning commission is the designated authority in town for approving or disproving a subdivision. And yet I understand it's the town council in the instance of the Stanford project. The planning commission has been relegated to an advisory role. I'd like to know who made that decision that the town council would take over jurisdiction for that project. When was it made? Somebody answer that?
I can give a shot at it, but, but in my opinion, and I'm kind of on my fourth or fifth year here, we're performing the same role we always perform when it comes to the Stanford wedge project. I haven't seen anything that the town council has said, you guys don't get to do this or you don't get to comment, that type of thing. We make our recommendation, anything large as usual gets, we make a recommendation, then it goes up to the town council to actually decide if things actually become law or things like that. But that's not new. That's quite a normal procedure from my perspective.
On an application for subdivision or any other building application in town, it's the planning commission that makes the decision. And then there's a right of appeal. You're not an advisory body. You're a adjudicatory body and a decision-making body. And yet the staff report indicates that the town council, in this case, not in any of the other cups. Notice that's not the case with Neely or any of the others. But in the case of the Stanford project, the town council's the final decision-making body. I just wondered who made that decision and when was it made?
All right, well, why don't we take that question and see if we can get you an answer. What's your next topic?
Next topic is on the housing element and in particular, the required amendment of the safety element. In 2012, the California Legislature enacted, the governor signed SB 1241, which requires municipalities like Portola Valley to amend their safety element at the next amendment of their housing element after that to perform a comprehensive community-wide hazard and risk assessment for wildfire. The statute's very specific. It's very particular and it's a mandatory, it's a mandate that's imposed upon the town to do this. And earlier, you heard comments from Mr. Young. Commissioner Targ suggested that those comments should have been suggested, directed perhaps to the town council. But the comments that Mr. Young was making, and in particular the letter he referred to, which I don't think this commission has seen, was signed by 85 residents and sent to the town council last week when the town council was taking up the RENA allocation and the amendment of the housing element. And what it pointed out is that before we look at amending the housing element, before we look at adding 253 RENA mandated houses in town, indeed, before we look at a school expansion, another state mandate requires us to do a comprehensive community-wide hazard and risk assessment that identifies within town all the highest hazard, very high hazard fire zones, high hazard fire zones. It requires us to allocate with respect to those hazards, land uses, to avoid essential services like schools or firehouses in areas that are designated as highest hazard. This is a mandate that's been in place now for six years in California in order to help us prepare for the hazard and risk of wildfire, to comprehend it and to plan accordingly. And that is quintessentially the jurisdiction of this body. If you're going to be amending the housing element, if you're going to be looking at allocating housing in town, you have to first look at what are the hazards and risks, both seismic and fire, throughout town and plan accordingly. And that mandate is embodied in state law. And the letter that was referred to is a letter that's asking the town council and you, before you look at the allocations, why aren't you looking at this? Are you bringing the appropriate sense of urgency and purpose? And do you have a plan in place? Have you budgeted for it? Do you have a work plan? And have you hired the appropriate contractors to implement that so that's done before you amend the housing element? Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Christie, you're up next. Actually, I want to make a comment on that. Needless to say, my comments were directed only to identify that Mr. Young was identifying us as a council and I wanted to gently bring his attention to the fact that we are not the council. And that if he wished to bring these issues to the council, that would of course be most appropriate. It's of course appropriate also to bring them to our attention, but I want to make sure that he was speaking to the body that he had intended. I'm interested in seeing the letter that was submitted and I don't disagree that it would be of value to the planning commission. And if I, if I may through the, through the chair, request that we receive a copy of that letter.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. All right, Christie, you're up next. Welcome.
Thank you for addressing my question. I do have questions regarding the ADU ordinance changes. It was pretty vague, so I'm wondering if Laura can be more detailed on the ADU California laws that have been in place in the last year, yet not written into our ordinances? If you could share a little bit more about that. And then I have a few other questions as well.
Right. So Christie, can I suggest you ask the questions? I think actually getting into the details of what's changed is appropriate when we're discussing the ADUs rather than doing that tonight. So tonight was really meant to be an overview of these are projects that are coming up, not let's understand what the project is.
Okay. Do we have an approximate date for the draft EIR for the Stanford wedge?
So Laura, do you know if there, is there a date for that?
There's not a date yet. There's not a date yet.
Okay.
Okay. And then I, Rena question, if we've gone over 64, does it roll to the next eight-year cycle? Say we're at 100, which
It does not.
No rollover. Okay. And then
So if you don't make your numbers, you, they roll over, but if you do make your numbers, you don't get credit?
Okay.
No rollover either way.
Either way. Okay.
And then with the priories asking for more attendance or more applicants, what number are they asking for?
So again, can I suggest that we wait until they've actually made their application and it's before us to discuss?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not trying to cut you short. It's just, I think you're, you're starting to get into the details and tonight was really meant to set out a roadmap so that we know when we had to start, you know, understanding the projects and reviewing them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or is that it?
I think that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off. I just want to make sure that we deal with these things at the appropriate time. So I appreciate it. You jumping in. Betsy, you're next. Welcome.
Why? Thank you. Um, yes, I, I might have a short question and I may, it may, depending upon the answer. Laura said that this regards the Neely winery cup that review is active, but there was no subject. And I don't know if she means that the review is active, meaning that the SEQA has been turned back into the town and review is active by the town staff or is review, is the secret report still, are you still awaiting the report itself? Is it in the consultant's hands that it's active or in town staff's hand?
Through the chair, it's more complex than that. We work together with the consultant. So that's the part that's happening right now. We're working with the consultant to discuss their findings and determine the path forward, the correct document, review and the analysis, those types of things.
I see. And thank you. And then maybe I do have a follow-up. You were kind enough to anticipate mid-March for Fire Station Eight. Can I presume since there's still active, ongoing conversation about SEQA that whether it's the ASCC or planning, whoever will see this first, is it more likely to be after that? Or do you think it more likely to come before that?
It's likely that it will come after that or ASCC would be at a similar timing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy.
Yes.
I also want to say that Laura's doing her best to put out the sort of broad roadmap. Until we actually get the information, it's really hard to schedule exactly when these things happen. So
Oh, I hear you. Thank you.
So I, you know, I just want to make clear to everybody in the audience that this is not a dated roadmap. This is just a, here are the set of things in the next year that we're going to be reviewing. And there's usually lots of things that go into setting the actual date when it gets on our calendar. Okay. So, um, so I see Kristi, you've got your hand up again. If it's short, why don't you jump back in? Usually we just have sort of one comment per person, per section, but go ahead.
Sorry. Sorry. I had one more question on if the zoning changes for the firehouse, does that change zoning in other areas of the city? Of the town?
We haven't finalized how the zoning code amendment would be structured, but that is possible, but it would be very, very limited in the way that it would be approached, specific to public buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments? All right. Then I will close the public comment section and move on. Are there any committee reports? No, no, no. Okay. Nobody's going to jump in here. All right. So I'm going to assume no committee reports, staff reports. You got PV donates?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute for a moment. Um, the town is working on a donation program where residents or members of the public could make small donations and kind of participate in projects and things that are coming up. And so this is something that Jeremy is leading. And so some of the committees are more directly involved with this. We didn't necessarily see a direct tie-in for the planning commission. But we wanted you to know that this was going on. If you're interested in getting more information, you can let me know and I'll connect you with Jeremy so that you can see, learn more about how that's working. So it's really just a notification for the planning commission that this is something we're working on, but it's not necessarily within the planning commission's purview.
So is that something like, I, I know when the Frog Palm stuff had come up, you know, people were talking about raising money. Is that something that might go through this kind of program?
I don't know about that project in particular, but yeah, that's the intent. And so that there would be a system in place for people who want to make contributions to things that didn't warrant like a very big capital, you know what I mean? Drive where, you know, it raised funds for town center, but you know, just for small things that would be ongoing, interesting projects as a way for the community to participate financially in seeing those things come to fruition.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. So now we are at the minutes. So do we have any comments on the minutes? Why don't I start with Judith?
Yes, there are some.
I, I don't know why I guess that you might have some, but I thought I'd give it a shot.
Well, two of us weren't there, so it, it is kind of down to three of us. My first one is a net and it's on red page 15 of the minutes and the second full paragraph, there's a comma in the wrong place in the third line. So what's known about it, space, comma, and minor comment. Um, on red page 16, this last full, second to last full paragraph, it's quoting me saying something about the PUD applications. And it says, I asked if they can actually integrate fire hazards. I think go back and listen, but my question was about whether the PUD applications address or can consider fire hazards? That was my question. I'm not sure what it means to integrate fire hazards. Maybe it means integrate fire hazard considerations. All right. Red page 18, the last paragraph, it starts off Mr. Donahoe. And in the second line, it says, providing twice the number of affordable housing units required. And it references Rena. I think that's misleading. I would suggest you go back. I think what he meant was twice the number of affordable housing units required under the density bonus, not under the Rena requirements, because that's not what the project's doing. So if you can check, I mean, it's his statement, but check it for accuracy. Okay. And red case 22, there's an acronym UI that I didn't see explained and it seems a rather important. The UI, if you, you can spell it out or explain it once. It's the fifth line down, cluster housing in the WUI is risky business.
Yeah, woo, it's, it's wooey, right? This is the yeah, wild, yeah, wild urban interface, but, but you're just saying, make sure that it gets expanded so that people can read it. That makes total sense.
Yeah, just so people can follow what, what's going on in the minutes itself rather than going back and forth. Um, and the okay. And the last comment is on red page 27. It's the long paragraph in the middle of the page quoting me. And it's about two thirds of the way down. There's a sentence saying she wants to make sure that when talking about certain density, they know how they got there. Um, and would like some substantiation. I, I would go back and listen to see what that is. I think all I was asking for is the calculation of the slope density or the result from applying the slope density rules. And I think I was trying to say if, if that's a critical density attribute, we want to really understand the calculations for getting there. So and then the last line in that paragraph, I'm sure I didn't say understanding how to lock in the affordable housing. Probably just say achieve affordable housing in a way that makes sense for the community. I'm not sure if that's a transcription error. That's it.
Great. Thank you. John?
Yeah, actually I had one. Red page 28, near the top, fourth line down, he said, the question is, would 21 individual houses be better or worse? And I believe I was trying to imply 21 individual houses plus possible ADUs. Whether those would be better or worse. So insert kind of the plus possible ADUs. That was it.
So Nicholas and Ann, I know you guys sort of left the meeting early, but do you have comments for the minutes? Nicholas?
Only that I can say that I stated former Chair Haskas' service eloquently.
And it was appreciated.
Great. Thank you. Ann, did you have anything?
Nope. I reviewed the minutes and everything's fine by me.
Okay, great. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion.
I'm sorry, through the chair, we should get in the habit of calling for any public comment on the minutes.
Okay, fair. Yes, that's fair enough. Thank you. That's one thing about not having an audience to actually look at it and sort of. So are there any public comments on the minutes from the last meeting? And I'll wait just a minute to see if any hands go up. All right. I don't see any hands, so I think we're going to move ahead. If one pops up, I'll, I'll loop you back in. All right. So now can I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Judith and John?
I move to a mode, I move to approve the minutes from January 20th, 2021 with the amendments.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. I think that's it for tonight. Other than, I wanted to say thank you very much Vice Chair Copsill for taking over for me. Again, my apologies. And I will look forward to reviewing the video or the audio transcript of the first half hour. With that, is there anything else?
Do you want to move to close the meeting, Craig?
And a second?
Second.
We need to have a public comment on that?
I don't think, you know, you're not allowed to have a discussion on a motion to adjourn.
There you go.
You just, you just get to vote it up or down. So, all right. So I'm good to us. Who would like to vote against this motion? So all in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Good night, all.
Bye, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Evening.